Okay. This is the January 25th, 2021, meeting of the PPS Board Policy Committee. We have presence of the board directors plus student representatives, Jillian Skelding and Jackson Weinberg. Okay, we have another very full agenda, so we're going to have to keep this discussion moving. We're going to start off with a discussion of the Climate Crisis Response Policy. With a disc, including a discussion of the Community Engagement Plan. At least a forecasting of the engagement plan. So we have we have a couple of items that were provided, that were emailed to board members and posted online. The first is the Climate Crisis Crosswalk. Somebody
Rita, I thought that Mike was calling in to talk about what had happened previously in the engagement efforts. As the committee was, as the Climate Justice Advocacy Group was bringing the policy forward, and that was going to be the kind of starting point, and then a discussion with board members about what engage, further community engagement they, you all want to hear from in furtherance of your policymaking.
Is, um, is Mike?
Mike's in Africa. Mike Rosen is in Africa right now.
Yeah, he wanted to call in. He asked for an early set to call in from Tanzania.
I want to call in. I don't see his name on here. Do we know there is a phone number?
Amy Higgs says Mike is not in the country today, so I don't know if she has more updated information than we do.
No, the one, Director Berman Edwards is phoning in. But I don't see.
Okay, so, um, let's give him, maybe he's having a little bit of trouble calling in.
Rita, if it's helpful, the, and the agenda actually before the Climate Crisis Response Policy, there was a brief update on the formal complaint policy, and I'm happy to I can do that anytime, but if we want to give Mike a little time, if he's trying to dial in, I could address that very, it'll only get us a couple minutes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So when we last left, the, there were, there was, there is a draft that the committee has been considering with some proposed changes. The committee has not, uh, I think there's one more look at that to do, but there was a pause while a survey was done. Of families who have been involved in the complaint, had a formal complaint with the district, and a survey was sent to them. And I should, I should have backed up and said with the departure of Stephanie Sodin back, Mary and I, and Lydia moving on to her new job, Mary and I are stepping in and kind of picking up some of the substantive work, not just the political, the policy committee staffer side of the work. So we have met with lots of people, including the really Alexis from, from Russ's team. And we are just, we are getting some clarifying information about which respondents participated in the process before the 2018 revision, and which participated after the 2018 revision, because we get that, that's helpful. But we are that close to having that information, and then we will bring that, share that to the policy committee and bring that back to next, next week's agenda, unless you would like us to do otherwise. And then I think there can be a final run through of the language and discussion of any outstanding items on the proposed revisions. And if there are any additional revisions that are recommended coming out of the survey, I think most of that's going to be in terms of training and process and less policy, but we will, we will be tight on that recommendation to you at that time when we have that, and I think we should easily have that by the next meeting. So that is the staff update on the formal complaint policy. Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Um, this is Julia Brim Edwards. So Liz, the question I have is, I didn't know the survey had gone out, and then when I asked for it, it got sent the survey, but it looked like, it would look like it went to a lot of people, which is great. Was really glad to see that. But it looked like it was a survey about people's experience with the complaint process. But did we also send them the draft revisions to the complaint policy and ask for their, any recommendations or specifically to our policy? Or we just talked to them about their experience?
I believe it was just about their experience.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't send them the policy with the, here are the changes that we're proposing, and here's, here's why? And get their point of view?
We had, as I recall-
Just because it's like, it is around the policy, so it seems like, it seems like it'd be relevant to get their feedback. The policy.
I, I think we wanted, I think, and again, I'm stepping in, I was not on the front lines of Stephanie's work when it was happening at the outset, but I think the thinking was, we wanted to get a sense of their experience across multiple domains. So what the policy, the process that's set out in the policy, your experience when they went through it, the satisfaction they had by the result, what was the outcome they got. So it was more holistic than the policy, and I think that, I surmise that the thinking was the feedback gleaned from that holistic survey, more holistic survey can be adapted to the policy by learning what, and again, I, we're not done with that work, because we just got, we're just like combing through the last questions, but I think that was the, I surmise that was the intent. Again, I apologize for not having a clear line of sight backwards into what the thinking was. But I do not understand that the draft policy was sent out. I will confirm that with Lydia, but I don't, I don't believe it was. Could it be sent out again to the same families? It could. I don't know, I mean, that's, we got about, Mary, was it a 25%, 27% response rate? I'm, yeah, something like that.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, so, I mean, do we go back to those 27%? Do you go back to everybody? Does everybody who didn't respond want to get another email? I mean, I'm not sure what all that family engagement piece, I would defer to experts in Russ's group about that. Or an email that sends a link and invites people to send in comments? Is it part of the, separate from the survey, but to the same group? I mean, there are probably lots of ways to do that. So I guess what I would say is, I would ask the committee, we are here to serve you and get you information you need, so I would, we will follow your direction on that issue, about how to handle that, and how you would like to receive feedback from that group beyond the survey.
So just as an individual board member, or committee member, like, I like the concept of holistic feedback, because it's like, yeah, it's maybe like the implementation or something else that's, you know, if you just ask the question about the policy, then you don't get the, you know, complete feedback. I do think for the, for the board, it's important to like, hear the changes we're making. Are there others that you would suggest, or what do you think about the ones we're making, just because that is like, more specific to, to what we're doing? And not that the other information is, won't go unused by staff, but it seems like it would be most relevant to also get very specific feedback on the policy and the, you know, changes we're proposing. It's my opinion.
Okay. All right, so Liz, was there anything else you needed from us on this?
No, based on that feedback and hearing, no, no contrary point of view, we will send that, that, some inquiry out to the people who were originally solicited for the survey and ask for their feedback. And see, make sure that the committee members have that.
Um, do you have any idea? About Mike?
I would suggest that we send that out immediately. Oh, I'm sorry, Rita, go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, it's going to be complete speculation at this point, but what's your best guess?
Well, I don't think it's very hard to send out an email with a link and an invitation to provide comment, right? I mean, I don't think we have to construct a complex document to do that. And I think the, it's three weeks from today. I would, I would see if we can get something out in the next day or two, with a 10-day or two-week turnaround time, and try to get something in advance of the next meeting. Because I know this policy's been out, but I, we'll see. I may be, this is not my native habitat in surveys and this kind of engagement with families. So I may be assuming things are easier than, to get done than they are. But that, I would shoot to get as much done as possible this week, to get the ball rolling.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to the Climate Crisis Response Policy. And Amy Higgs, who is one of the attendees, can we move her over to a panelist?
She's on her way.
Okay, she has graciously agreed to respond to some inquiries about the community engagement that was done in preparation for the draft policy that was presented to this committee.
Thank you, Rita. Hi, directors, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, Mike is in, in Africa right now. And basically, just to provide a little bit of background, and let me know if you want background before when this part of the story is going to begin, but last fall, not this past fall, but the fall before that, Mike and I started some conversations with PPS staff and started drafting some language for a policy after talking with Aaron Pressburg and Whitney Ellersick and a number of other PPS department leads, and had some meetings about what we would like to see in a climate crisis response policy. And once we had a pretty solid draft, I would say we were somewhere around version 10, and I think that was this past summer. We started sharing early versions of this policy with some community partners. And if I can do a screen share, is it okay if I share my screen for a minute? I'll show you the partners that we have got, the, the groups on here have provided comment and either said that they would sort of endorse our policy, or they have reviewed it. Some of them reviewed it and said, looks good. Others reviewed it and provided written comment back to us with specific recommendations for improvement. We have another document that I think is on Mike's computer where we have kept track of which organizations have reviewed it and what they have said. And then after each organization shared their input, we we took another careful look at the policy and made changes accordingly, if we thought that it made sense. There are a few other organizations we sent it to who never responded, and those are not included on this list. And there are a handful of organizations that have recently provided comment that, that I have not yet put on this list, because this, this slide was prepared a few months back. So that, that kind of sums up, I think, what we've done so far. Are there questions about that, or did you want more specifics?
So, let me just count them up. Some of these I recognize, some of them I don't. So it would be, I think it would be helpful if you if this is amenable to both you and, and these partners. I think it would be helpful if you could share with us any feedback you got. And kind of what kind of, any more information about what kind of internal process they may have used in responding. So, I mean, for example, I can imagine that some of these, it was a kind of internal staff process, but some of them might have done some community outreach of their own.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, this was not meant to be a comprehensive public involvement effort. This was meant to be us sort of getting some early input from organizations, and so in many cases, it was, you know, Mike or, or me knowing someone that we sent this to, and a specific representative, like a, an executive director or a program manager would respond after having read it just on their own, or maybe having discussed it with a staff person. I know that at Metro, they shared it around to a number of people, but I'm not sure, I believe it was only, it was all staff, and it was, certainly wasn't all of their staff. And I know the PPS Climate Justice Committee has taken a much more careful dive into this and shared it with their student representatives and their teacher representatives. But I would say that in most instances, it was not, you know, like, these organizations weren't sharing it out to their whole network and gathering a lot of feedback and then coming back to us, unless they did that without me knowing, which is, is possible. And, and many of them, I'll say, about, you know, five or six of them, I was sort of the point person, and Mike was the point person for most of these, so I'm not exactly sure what the communications were between Mike and these organizations. Oh, but just sorry, you also asked about what their specific feedback was. For many of them, they wanted to see more specifics. They wanted to see language that would make it really clear what changes would take place. So rather than just setting vague targets, they wanted to see language about, you know, for example, disposable, you know, forks and trays in the cafeterias. There was also some feedback from the Go Green Initiative, which is an organization that supports other school districts with this process of creating language for, for climate policies, and they recommended that we focus it a lot more on preparedness for the impending impacts of climate change, and how that will impact frontline communities. And there were a number of other organizations that had, had, you know, wanted to make the, the the frontline community, the role sort of more visible in this policy. And we incorporated a lot of that feedback. So I would say that a lot of it was about specific changes that they wanted to see, like specific language for one or two of the, the, the goals or strategies that aligned most closely with, with their organization.
So if, if we could, if you could share the more, you know, the more detailed list of the organizations and groups that you've contacted, even the ones that didn't respond. And also, if, if it's okay, if you could share their responses, any responses that you got, that would be helpful, I think. Because as, um, as PPS tries to come up with its own engagement, it would be helpful to know who's, who's even aware that we're going to be, we're working on this. So it would be helpful, I think, to circle back to a lot of these groups. But we also want to know who hasn't yet been contacted, to make sure that we get a, you know, now that we're in the process of actually deliberating in a policy, our process is going to have to be different and more comprehensive and deeper. But this would give us a good starting place to know what you've already done, so that we can build on it rather than, you know, ignore it.
Absolutely. Yeah, as soon as Mike gets back, or as soon as he responds to his email, we'll, we'll get that information to you.
Okay, that would be great. Liz, was there anything else that we wanted to ask about today on this?
In terms of engagement, I think that's as far as we can go. Shanice was unable to be here today unexpectedly, and for all the right reasons, and so I think staff taking that information that Amy and Mike provide, thank you, Amy, and developing a proposed plan, I think also getting any feedback today from any of the committee members, if there are specific voices, communities, constituents you want to hear from, you know, that would be helpful to surface that as the, the plan is put together. But again, it's not, it's not the only time to ask that question, but it is, as input on the front end is helpful.
So I think, I think maybe the most efficient way to get input from committee members on this question would be through email. So that you know, staff can, especially because Shanice isn't able to be here. She's going to be watching the recording, but she's not able to participate live, so email might be the best way to, to get any suggestions you might have to staff and the rest of the committee for later follow-up. And and also, I think if you have any, well, let me ask right now, does anybody have any questions about the engagement? Knowing, you know, with the understanding that this is just the very, very beginning stage of thinking through the engagement process. Anybody have any questions? Okay, so Liz?
It's on the same policy, but not about engagement, so let me not divert you if you were to say something else about engagement.
Well, I think I was going to say, so let's, let's move on, but let's kind of put a hold on the engagement discussion and move on to other aspects of the policy, so, there you go.
Well, as a, bridging some of what we heard last, at the last meeting, when Dr. McKee did her presentation about the national landscape, and we heard from Mike and Amy and others about that, that some of that work was also the foundational in building out the policy draft that's before you. One of the questions is whether looking at some, for instance, the Department of Ed Green Schools has the three pillars. Got an echo. And, and whether it would be helpful for the committee to incorporate, for instance, in the, in the curriculum work, you know, the, I'm going to botch the formal pillar name, but pillar three of the green schools as an example, there are opportunities to build into policy some of the curricular work that's already going on, and also what may be planned. And I want to get into the substantive conversation of what that is yet, because that's, that's beyond our agenda today. But if we, would it be helpful for the committee to come back with some augmenting, complementing pieces that round out some of those other pillars, is that of interest to the committee?
I, I would say yes. Anybody else on the committee want to comment?
I did, I'd agree. Yeah, I think the, the pillars, we were able to incorporate everything that was in the initial draft. And it pointed out some places where we could even augment in the policy. So I think that's going in a good direction.
So, I have this, it's just like another issue that I'm curious about, just as we work on this policy, did we get the sort of climate footprint that we currently have? I know there was some work underway, but do we have that, just so we have a baseline? I think last time I asked, it was like in process, and I'm just curious. We can have a great policy, but if we don't know where we're starting from, or it's hard to set targets, and then also know if you made targets.
Dan, I thought, and I may be misremembering, that two meetings ago, that was included, but maybe we can recirculate a new or recirculate to the board if that's so that that, what we have is there. I know Erin has done that work. It's now been six weeks since the first time, so I'm not remembering with precision.
One of the materials for this meeting that listed is an updated Climate Crisis Crosswalk, and it's updated as of December 2020.
There's a different document as well that talks about some of the emissions, am I remembering correctly, Dan? I'm going to let you speak to it and me stop speculating about my memory or your subject matter expertise.
Yeah, there is another document, and I can't, I don't recall when it was shared, so I think it was a while ago, so we can recirculate that. And what it does is it calls out the, the certain areas where we have good data for baselining, and then other areas where we don't have as good of data. So it tries to go through a little bit and say, here's where we're more solid than in other categories of the work.
It just seems like we have, there's a different types of work in this policy, and some of them, like the curricular and the engagement with frontline communities, that, those are actually have different measurements about whether we've been successful versus just the, you know, here's what our current footprint is, and when we do X, we're anticipating by 2040, you know, we will have reduced of, you know, our, you know, emissions, or whatever the metric is, by X amount. It just seems like it'd be good to have that as, like, get that scorecard sort of set up, so that we can sort of assess, because there's, there's a lot of different things in that policy, and we're you know, going after the ones that have the biggest impact. Or deciding, you know, which ones are the most important to get after first, I think would be, you know, just part of the the top, the policy-making decision, because we, we should go deep on any number of those. But what are going to have the biggest impact, and what are we, what, what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, I'm going to have a bit of a different perspective on that. I think there's some global targets that we should have, but the kind of checklist that you're talking about is much more an operational piece. That's, that's way too detailed for all.
Yeah, it's not actually a checklist, it's, what is, it's the overarching, what is the goal, the policy trying to accomplish? Not whether activities took place, but actually whether the effectiveness of the district action, which I do think is sort of the highest level of, of work, but not like, hey, did, you know, this particular activity take place, because that is operationalized, but like, are we actually just, just like ours? Or having a difference on what we're trying to impact?
I, I think we have that in the draft, in terms of the big overarching goal around our carbon footprint. So I'm not sure, and again, we can, when we get more details, we can maybe get a little bit of clarification, because we're talking a little bit theoretically right now, but I'm not sure how much more detail we should get outside of here's where we want to be, and you know, 20 years from now in terms of our carbon footprint.
You're, you're exactly right. Scott, I'm just asking, like, where are we now?
Yeah, and I think we can know some things, and other things are going to be really difficult to quantify.
So I'm going to suggest that we ask Dan to recirculate the information that you sent us earlier, so that we the information that you sent us earlier so that we may have it and that we can, we can use as the foundation for future discussions. And we'll have to figure out when we can talk in more detail about that. But part of the discussion might be what, what data are doable and what are not? Like, what data can we get reliable? Or what elements can we get reliable data on now? Or could we get in the future if we set up systems? So let's, I'm going to kick that back to you, Dan, to figure out what we've got, what we could get, what we can't get. And then let us know when you, when you're going to be able to produce a more, you know, anything, anything more detailed about, you know, any kind of scorecard or data that beyond what you've already produced.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I can circulate some information that goes into kind of the different levels of detail that the district or another organization could go into when they're looking at their carbon footprint, and then give you some information on where we think we have good data, such as utilities and other areas where the data is going to be harder to come by, such as non-student-related transportation, employee transportation, and things like that are obviously larger challenges. But I can, we can provide that information.
Okay. And, and I would ask that, especially if you're kind of speculating about what we could get in terms of data. I, I think it's important that we understand at what cost? Like, how much effort would go into developing a data system that we don't have already? Or are there, could, could we piggyback on data that are being collected by other entities? You know, Metro, the city, the state, whoever. So anyway, I just want to make sure that whenever we land on, it's got to be doable for the district. And it's got to be an efficient and effective use of very scarce resources to, to accomplish the goal.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd rather put more of our staff time into implementation of effective measures as opposed to trying to get a more exacting baseline measure. And again, it's, it's, it'd be great to have that, that, there's, there's the reality around it, too.
Okay, so, so the other thing that we wanted to do, we've got another 20 minutes-ish. And the other thing we wanted to do was kind of linking back to the last board, last committee meeting, when we heard about the pillars and the green schools initiative. And we asked staff to, to look at revising the policy document to incorporate the concept of the pillars that is, you know, sort of the, the national model. So in, Liz, Mary, could you talk a bit about how you've applied the conceptual framework of the pillars onto the draft policy?
I, I can speak to that. And just to frame for the broader audience, it was, this is not a document that's before the committee today, because it really was a conceptual, if you just reordered the structure, how do you end up with? Where do the policy recommendations align with each of the pillars? And are they, do we have opportunities? And that's what I was mentioning a few minutes ago, not very eloquently, about pillar three and some of the, the curricular pieces. So pillar one was, you know, reducing carbon gas emissions, reducing the carbon footprint, waste, those pieces. And a lot of the policy work in the draft is very thorough in that, in that pillar. Pillar two was, is about health and wellness, air quality, light, food quality being served, physical exercise outside, those pieces. And then three, the third pillar was about, as you'll recall, the sustainability, education, CTE, STEM connections. And when we looked at, and not, it's not a, you know, keeping score about how many items are under which pillar, but when you look at the breadth of the work that happens inside PPS and the recommendation from Dr. McKee last week that having the three pillars in play together helps drive a more sustainable culture. So this work is more effective, so that it, you get better buy-in and better results and have a higher likelihood of achieving the out, the desired outcomes of the policy. You know, I, I think, and I, this is not my area of expertise. I was merely just doing a sorting, structuring exercise with the document just to see if that helped us think about it. I think there are opportunities to go to our subject matter experts and help fill in some of those other particularly column, pillar three, but also probably some in pillar two. That work hasn't been done. I mean, the, the work was simply a thought-starting exercise in response to what we heard about how would that, the current content in the draft be distributed among the pillars? Hearing the lesson of the pillar, the point of the pillars is to help drive effectiveness and go better, stronger, faster, longer, right? So I think the next steps would be for, but we're checking in with the committee about what's helpful to the committee, if, if you want to see some of those policy, what those policy proposals might be in the, in the second and third columns, again, to compliment the really thoughtful work that's already there. And there's some in all three, but the majority is in pillar one.
So are we, Liz and Scott and I have already talked to staff about kind of applying the conceptual framework. So we wanted to check in with the rest of the committee to make sure that this was something that you would be interested in, in seeing come forward. Are there any objections? Okay, okay, so.
Hey, Rita, I couldn't get off mute. Just to clarify, it's an objection. But that's the, so the exercise is, and because I didn't have the benefit of being part of that conversation, I just want to make sure I understand. It's, it's not to shift off the policy, but more how does it align against the pillars? So it's more of a reordering or restructuring, the alignment and integration versus a replacement?
Um, yes.
That's a question.
It's more like, it's.
It's how, how it's organized.
Yes. It's.
It's how it's organized, Scott? Is that what you meant? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's just what I'm trying to clarify.
Nothing, nothing of content fell out. It was all in. And Rita, I was going to say, it looked like Amy, before she raised her hand, was, was biting her lip, leaning in. So I didn't invite her to.
Thank you, I would appreciate that. Thanks, Scott. So I wanted you all to know, so my background is in sustainability education as well. And when we started drafting this, we actually based the original draft on the ODOE Green School Green Ribbon Award, the three pillars, and it was very much aligned with that. But the more we got into it, the more we thought that the need right now is for a climate crisis response policy. The ODOE Green Schools pillar framework is about green schools in general, and it includes things like healthy students, physical activity, toxins, all kinds of things that aren't necessarily related to climate change directly that are very important. And I'm a total, you know, fan of all of that. We specifically and intentionally shifted this to be more about climate crisis response. And that's why we decided to move away from, from sticking with those three pillars and focusing the policy more directly on climate crisis response. So we did go through that process and largely used those three pillars in figuring out what to include in the original drafts of the policy.
So Amy, and, and yet, plastic forks and plastic trays were still in your draft policy, which again, aren't a climate issue per se.
I think that's arguable. There, the, the climate, the carbon emissions from creating all those forks and trays is much higher than the emissions from using durables. So we tried to include only things that were related to climate change. And there may be things that are less directly related, but that was our len.
Okay, thanks.
So, so I, that's, that's good information to have. And it might be, if you had, if you use that in an original or in an earlier draft, would you mind sharing that?
I can take a look. And the earlier drafts were very messy, and there were a lot of notes. And I'll see if there's anything there that makes sense to share. Yeah, I can take a look and see what we have.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm not a big fan of reinventing wheels, so I will happily steal anything that is of use. But I also think it's important that this committee kind of look comprehensively at, at this policy as an opportunity to kind of hit many different things potentially that would include the, you know, the education piece of, of the school district's work in addition to operational and that sort of thing. So anyway, let, let's see how it, how it shakes out. And staff will, will bring it forward to probably the next meeting, I think. And then we can substantive discussion on.
And one other piece is that the, right now, the curriculum piece is in a board resolution. And so we're looking for a really coherent framework to bring in, get it out of a resolution into policy, which is much more visible and enduring. So that, that was also part of our thinking on that.
And this is a little bit of inside baseball, but it provides some context. I think over the years, various iterations of the board have expressed very significant, essentially, policy pronouncements in the form of resolutions that are very often difficult to keep track of. So to the extent possible, we're, we're trying to sort of recalibrate toward putting those statements of principle and values into a policy framework that can actually be tracked over time. So anyway, all right, so I, I think, I think we've gone as far as we can at this point on this topic. So I'm going to move us on to the next topic, which is the student assignment policy. And let me just say a couple of words about this. This policy did not appear on the original work plan that came out of the committee. But as we discussed that work plan, it was noted numerous times by multiple people that the committee was going to have to be responsive to emergent issues as they came up. So that, you know, we, we need to have enough flexibility to respond to needs as they arise. And for those of you who are aware of the, the work happening in Southeast around defining feeder patterns for Kellogg Middle School, which will open next year, and then the accompanying enrollment balancing work, it has become clear that we need to resume the work that, the work on the student assignment policy that we started last year but had to pause because of COVID. It was one of the casualties of the COVID kerfuffle. And as the Southeast Guiding Coalition moves into a phase two, like, we're, we're hopefully going to be closing out phase one and then moving ahead toward a phase two, which will include boundary work. Staff, in consultation with me and Scott, and Scott and I have been actively involved in the whole issue for a very long time, longer than I care to think. It's becoming clear that we need to clarify the policy in order to allow the guiding coalition to get clarity around the numbers that they're dealing with, like, how, and how the policy is going to be aligned with the decision-making process of the guiding coalition. So we're bringing this policy forward again to resume our discussions. So that's by way of intro. So I'm going to hand it off to Claire, I think, to talk about what this policy is and what we, the, the elements of the policy that we need to consider going forward.
Thank you, Chair Moore, and for your introduction to this topic. We, Judy Brennan and I are both here to support the board as they talk through these edits. And we have, we initially had some conversation in this policy committee a year ago, and it's time to resume that work. And so we bring forward the updates, especially, I want to say the one thing that I believe is probably the most prominent change from a year ago is adding a high school where in the language in section five, you can see in the blue that high school students may remain at their current school through graduation. And I think that stems, that recommended language stems from the conversations that the, the board has been hearing from the community as we talk about enrollment and program balancing. And that, especially when you think about different kinds of programs, if you're in an AP program or an IB program, and then you're expected to change schools in the middle, that it's hard for you to complete those programs in your high school, during your high school years. So the, and it's just, so it just allows for that possibility. And I think that's, there's been a lot of support for that component, especially as we talk through the enrollment and program balancing. And Liz Large, I'm not sure if there are other items that you wanted to highlight this, this evening as well.
Mary's taking the staff lead, but I think it's here at, for the reasons you've described. Mary, is there anything else to add? You're on mute, Mary.
Thank you. I'm not much. We, there are a few other smaller changes. We've updated definition, underserved students, and I think, I'm looking at the document now. And added some language at the end of, when we would make exceptions to implementation of boundary change. Judy, was there anything else we, that you wanted to? that you wanted to highlight on this?
No.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions about, I have a couple of questions about it. Um, one, um, because it's a pretty significant change. Um, what's going to be the community engagement strategy um that we would gather to get community feedback before we move ahead like we've done with our other policies? And then second, um, the changes that are being implemented again because they're a rather significant shift, um, are these going to be applied to all the high schools, not just those going forward, because we obviously have students who aren't in their neighborhood schools and um it seems from an equitable standpoint that it applied, would apply to everybody. I mean, that that's normally how policies work, not just I'll just say what I I'm hearing from the Southeast is that it would, hey, a whole new set of rules is only going to apply to us, but what about the whole rest of the um, so those would be sort of my two questions for for staff, and I know Shanice isn't here, but I would expect that we would have a robust engagement process around a topic that a lot of people have a perspective on.
So I'll I'll jump in here. Um, today is just the um, we're we're sort of introducing this policy. Um, we're not going to be, uh, I don't think we have time today to talk in exquisite detail about the suggested revisions. And y- yes, um, there there is a presumption that we'll have community engagement on it. W- we don't have a um, a proposal for that community engagement um today. Um, but we will be getting it um down the road.
The other thing that I would add about uh the stat, this is status quo for the high school from the current policy. So it allows the current policy for high schoolers to continue. It's modifying it for grades K through eight. So it is um allowing for the high schoolers to continue. So it's not really a change in policy. It's a change in a draft of a policy, just to be clear.
Right, but I'm, I guess, my larger point was not about today's specific change, but about the policy in in general. So it had been, as Rita mentioned, um on pause for the COVID or for whatever reason. And now we're bringing it back up. And so what I'm just saying is that we haven't had the community engagement around this particular set of changes, and I would just expect that before we move something to a first reading.
And we will have that. We we will, we will have uh at the next uh meeting have have a plan for you.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, and Julie, I didn't understand your second question.
Well, so if the, like, I'm I'm not speaking into the most recent um iteration, but just the underlying policy, and this is a question I've had since the very beginning, is when we um have um passed resolutions, that there have been some legacy rights that have been granted and sibling rights. And if we're about ready to change to change that, that my assumption is it applies to, you know, all all students, not just the students going through the process next next time. You know, who, whatever change is made next.
And Julia, I, I mean, I've heard about anecdotal promises made, but do we have, like, that stuff in writing with people, or is it all just kind of expectation and and sort of
No, there were some resolution, there were some resolutions and
Okay, so passed at board meetings.
Yeah, so we should just go through that. And I mean, again, um, I think we want to be consistent consistent across clusters that whatever, you know, what's good for Southeast is good for Northeast and the West and um, you know, I, if I look at, well, maybe Southeast right now is a sharp point, but like, it's probably going to be the West side next with Lincoln opening potentially. So, you know, look at that in the context of, you know, what's been promised in the past as current students who, if this, say, if we adopted this policy, um, may um be, you know, have, th- there's a new set of rules, and it seems like it would apply to everybody, but I just think we need to look at that so that it it's not the perception of like, hey, we're doing this for first, it hap- hap- things happen in Southeast, and that's, there's going to be one set of rules for Southeast, but other sets of rules for others, or and the ones who've gone before.
Well, that that sounds to me like uh we pass a law against riding a bike, and you rode a bike yesterday, so we get to arrest you. I I think policy has to be forward-looking from from this day forward. Unless there's like something specific, some specific action that the board would take retroactively.
Well, I don't see why there'd be one set of rules for Southeast and a totally different set of rules for Northeast or the West. I mean, I just we're gonna say, hey, this is the rules are.
Are you talking about decisions that were made three years ago, for example?
I I am, I am. And, you know, other, there's other types of sibling, you know, issues. I ju- I think we just should need to be clear, because there will be a um, a focus on whether we're equitably applying our policies to all students.
So I do think that our Director of Enrollment and Transfer, Judy Brennan, has some examples um to share with you about um when we have resolutions or promises that have sunsetted.
Um, just for clarification, um, the last uh sibling preference after boundary change or sibling guarantee after boundary change um that exists in the system, the last active one has just been processed. That has been, has led to, I think there's eight um incoming ninth graders who live in what is now the Madison neighborhood, but have a guarantee to enroll next year at Grant because their their house is in what used to be the Grant neighborhood, and they have an older brother or sister who is still at Grant. It's the last eight. That means next year, that's because the last class of students who was freshman at Grant at the time of the change are seniors this year. So um, will be, so there are, or will be seniors next year. So there won't, there aren't any other active sort of um promises, if you will, that existed, that existing current policy that would need to be implemented or addressed if policy were to change effective next year.
So, because we already gave that privilege to the people in Northeast, but if we've enacted the policy, siblings in Southeast would be treated differently.
If the policy changes, the policy would affect people at the time of boundary change.
Okay, it's gonna, for me, it's gonna be for me, merit a larger discussion, but I understand today you're just introducing a topic, but
I I think what Judy's saying is is there's no, you know, even if we said this will apply retroactively, there's nobody left to apply it to.
Okay, and so my question would be, we thought it was a priority as a board to provide sibling preferences when we were making other changes, but now when it's coming to Southeast, I'm just saying, it's it's going to be a conversation that people are going to want to have about why there's going to be a different set of rules for siblings in Southeast than there were for siblings in the, in the most recent set of changes. And I, we don't need to debate it now. I'm just saying that's going to be part of the community dis- will be part of the community discussion.
Well, you can remind people that we're going to continue on to North Northeast in the next year or two, and whatever policy is on board for Southeast will be on board for North and Northeast. And
Well, I think, I think we should have the dis- discussion now. It's Grant's overcrowded, and we're trying to fill fill Madison. I mean, if that's, if that's the objective, then it seems like we should just dive into it, but it 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 will will, and again, we can, there'll be feedback with during the community feedback portion, but a sense that, you know, different set of rules for one part of town than another part of town.
And I, I take it I take it from the angle, Julia, that maybe we we made a policy and we learned from it, and that just because certain conditions were what we said for a certain group of people, it may be that that, what we've learned is that wasn't in the best interests of students because of what happened with overcrowding or the lag. And so I think we can make a case for, just because we did something in the past, doesn't mean we have to do it in the future. I think we can, I think you're right. We need to have an open and honest conversation with our community about it. But I don't think just because we made one decision when we were dealing with Grant, that that means that that was the best or right decision. Um, and we can learn from that and make a different decision for new, for the schools as we go forward. So I I think
I I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
I totally agree with you. And I say, we'll just have a discussion, because if we're saying we're going to move a boundary, so you, instead of going to this school, you're, you know, you're going to go to Madison when they're going to say, hey, we just look, if you need to, like, Grant's way overcrowded. It's the largest high school, and why aren't, you know, why isn't the district focusing on there? That to fill up Madison. So it just, we we're going to have to be able to make a cogent um case to the community about our actions. And it's not that we can't change our our policy. It's just, it it's going to have to seem rational and not that we're favoring one community over another.
I don't think anybody is suggesting that the reason to change a policy is to favor one group over another. That's precisely what we're not talking about. Um, what we're talking about is having a policy, uh, looking at a policy that, who's um elements have contributed mightily to the enrollment imbalances across the district over decades. And we have learned that in order to um redress the imbalances and create a system that is kind of self-regulating going forward, we need to address the policy that has led to those imbalances. So that's what we're doing.
Yeah, actually, I also want to have, as part of that conversation, or next, just setting up the conversation, is the hardship transfers. I know we're having an audit about it, but in all the schools that are overcrowded, there are, you know, fair number of hardship transfers and, you know, if it's, is that the, is that the policy that needs to be changed, or is it the policy, is it the boundaries, or is it both? Or is it a, you know, some sort of, what what's the mix between the two? Well, when I look at it, it's not simply, hey, we have a bad boundary policy and we need to get rid of sibling preference. There's a whole combination of factors of why we have schools that are um overcrowded or under enrolled.
So the last time we looked, we had hardship transfer data. Judy, that was about three years ago, two years ago, somewhere in there that we took a look. There weren't huge imbalances at schools because of hardship transfers. Is that correct? It's my memory from looking at the data then.
We got the data recently, and it seemed like there were a number of hardship transfers in both Grant and and Franklin. They pretty much, at my recollection, had been eliminated pretty much at Lincoln.
So um, we, we don't approve a lot of hardship transfers into Grant and Franklin. Um, I uh, this week and last week, um, on Tuesday uh, last week, we sent out uh most lottery and petition results for middle and high schools for the 2122 school year, so this is very fresh um information. Um, there were more than 40 requests into Grant, and virtually all of them that were in the hardship category were denied. However, um, there are, there's a boundary guarantee, and there's a guarantee for access students that's still on the books. So there are other factors, and I, um, there are other factors that apply to a number of schools. Um, there are kids who um might live in the Grant neighborhood, have been at Chinese immersion, and want to come back to their neighborhood school. They're guaranteed a return to their neighborhood school if they apply during the transfer cycle. So while it might I beg your pardon?
Or JMP and, you know, or students who, like, exit out of JMP, stay at Grant.
No, ma'am, not without approval from the principal, and occasionally that might happen if the student has an extraordinary need, but generally, we deny um the right to remain if the school is overcrowded.
Okay, so um, I think um we're going, today, we're just sort of introducing the topic and letting folks know that this is, uh, we're going to be looking at this. So I think it's becoming clear that there's going to be a lively discussion on this policy. And um, and I would expect nothing less. Um, but I wanted to, since this was an addition to the work, the original work plan that we had, um, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that it's, we're going to be looking at it. Um, and um, we can have a more substantive discussion um at the next meeting, uh, where we can talk about the specific revisions that are proposed and and then we can talk about whether we need to look at um any other policies in addition to this. So. Okay, so if uh, if there's no objection, um, I'd like to move us on to the next policy, which is the uh preservation, maintenance, and disposition of district real property. And you received in your materials a draft with uh a few additional changes um that we want to talk about tonight, and um with the hope that um, we can, we can move this to a first reading to the full board, um, if we are in agreement about these these last few changes. So um, we've got to take, Mary, Liz is going to take this one.
Liz.
You said that so quickly, Mary, without any hesitation. Almost as if you didn't want to take the lead on that one.
Oh, no. It's my gift to you.
Uh, thank you. You're so generous, Mary Kane. Um, so the the draft that you have, and it's been posted, is redlined against last week, not the very beginning of time and the current existing policy, in part because of all the changes and movement. It was starting to look like a ransom note and wanted to focus on the remaining changes um that were asked for, and this is the attempt to draft and capture them. If we, we also inserted some headers just to give a little more structure and organization and help set the path of the policy a little more clearly. Um, I think the the first change I would call your attention to on page one in section B is is a change that, as I recall, Director Lowry asked for in terms of keeping the land in the public domain. It's that reference. And I guess the, you know, did did that do it? Is there more needed? And I, okay. She's giving a thumbs up for those who might be listening and not watching. Um, the next, the next substantive change is on page two in section D, and you recall there was quite a bit of discussion um about whether to keep sale and lease conversations together or to separate them into separate sections, and I think the the path that became most clear was to treat them separately for a couple of of reasons. Some of the considerations for rent abatement under a lease or below market terms, whether it's Some of the considerations for rent abatement under a lease or below market terms, whether it's rent or otherwise under a lease. Involve some ongoing relationship defined by time periods of extraordinary circumstances, things that aren't really applicable to a sale. It's also true that a sale of anything of magnitude, I mean, it's $150,000 threshold is going to, which is very, very, very small piece of real estate in Portland, Oregon. It is going to come to the board anyway for full processing assessment of what, what is the unique transaction before the board? And under the terms of the policy itself that have, in the, the current version, makes clear that selling district real property. Without exchanging it for, replacing it with uh, an equal or better property is um, akin to a last resort. So for those, those reasons and perhaps others, this, this draft distinguishes between those two. It still provides in section C, right above that, that in all transactions, the district must seek to maximize long-term financial gain. I think some of the same principles in play about what is the normal course and expectation are still there. But you'll see, that's why section D is now just about. The sale, I guess the other, the, the fourth or 18th reason also is that there are these processes related to sale that didn't apply to leases. And so to have them in a combined section also was a little, um, a little murkier. At the end of section, that uh, end of page two, that very last redline section was Rita's request, Dr. Moore's request for. Building in an expectation that if property is sold to a, a buyer with the expectation that it remains in the public domain or is. For the public good, that it, we do. That transaction be structured in a way to make sure it stays there. And if not, then that PPS would have some sort of mechanism in a transaction to, to get it back. That's, I think, we've drafted it at a very high level because real estate transactions can have lots of twists and turns and unique attributes. But that, and again, every, every piece of property of any significance will be voted on by the board in, in that place and time as well. Uh, I'm, please interrupt me. I don't want to, we've been through this policy a lot of times. So I'm trying to find the right balance between detail and getting on so we can get it voted out, hopefully.
Can I just say thank you for indulging me in crafting this language? Um, I appreciate it and. I am mindful of the fact that this is going to make life difficult for staff who are responsible for dealing with these kinds of things. So I appreciate.
We, we are here in service of your policymaking at all times. So we, so you're welcome. Turning to page three. Most of that's just cleanup structure changes until you get to the presumption of market terms. And then again, this becomes about PPS leases. So you had your sales section. What are the priorities? What are the policies in play? What is the process if you're going to sell a property? Then leases gets into this extraordinary circumstance. So there's a presumption of market value. But then much of the language that you all have worked on for the past several months. About what do you do when there is an extraordinary circumstance and there is a request for below market terms under? How do you evaluate those and how do staff evaluate those? Most of the changes in. E1, A through D, uh, wherever we are.
Hey Liz, can I, can I just ask you?
Yeah, no, please.
I think part of this might have been lost because you only gave us the most recent changes. Um, let's see. So at the top of the, the section where you have the factors. So the how this play out is you would have. A combination of factors can be considered, but you don't have to have all these factors. But either one or some. Would be. Be the, the criteria that are used.
You have extraordinary circumstances plus one or more of the other factors to be taken into consideration.
So um, I'm just, is there a legal difference between extraordinary and unusual? I'm trying to think.
Not by any other positive source of law. So extraordinary circumstances is the language we used in drafting this to capture. Unusual, not expected at the, I mean, it's something unexpected at the time the parties entered into the original lease to begin with, right? It's, it implies that there has been some development. But I, it could be at the front end of a lease too. I should, I mean, I, it doesn't, I don't think it um. Prevents consideration at the front end.
Well, I'm just asking because what was worded extraordinary economic or other unusual circumstances seems broader than extraordinary. So I'm trying to figure out whether you, this was just like a consolidation of that longer phrase into one term that means the same thing? Or whether it's actually a narrowing?
I'm trying to find the exact.
It's right above.
Yeah, I see, I see it. Um. It was not an intentional narrowing. I want, let's be sure that we look at it carefully so that there aren't any unintended consequences. Cause my, the desire was to capture what you all asked for and to do no, no further harm.
My question because to me it seems narrowing, but if that wasn't the intent or the um, the result, then never mind.
So, so if you go back on the page though, it's actually, I'm sorry, it's been, I just, every edit doesn't, isn't at my fingertips. If you look earlier in the paragraph, extraordinary circumstances is defined as extraordinary or other unusual circumstances beyond the control of the parties. So it actually just got moved. It doesn't say economic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to bail for another meeting. Since it's not a week in the school board when you don't have at least two meetings scheduled at the same time. So uh, thank you. I, I, I like the new draft. I think it's uh, it's really. Uh, clarity, clarity is there and, and you've done a great job in translating our. Our meanderings, meandering thoughts. So I think we're in a good place.
Thank you, Director Bailey. I, you know, I, I think where you, the committee wants to focus on is that section E to make sure that's. Cause that is really why this policy, these policy changes were undertaken in the main. There were a couple other. Cleanup governance pieces around easements and rights of way, but this is really the, the harder issues you've tried to tackle and define. And so we want to make sure we've gotten that right. Um, and what? Go ahead, Julia.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished.
No, I was, should have been finished, Director Bimroderz, please.
Um, so I had a couple of things because um. I just saw the first draft one, um, a couple of days ago from the last time. And I'm wondering if now is the time for me to, to bring them up?
I think so. I'm looking at Dr. Moore.
So the first would be. The, for the district, the right to cancel any lease prior to the expiration, expiration of the term obviously creates uncertainty for. Our tenant, it seems, you know, the tenant, it seems like we should add with notice. And given how hard it is to find another location, it seems like we need to put in something that is fair to our tenants. That would be one thing. Um, and then.
Director, Director Bimroderz, just, can I, can I just pause there before we, we move on? Because that would be something, assuming I'm in the right, in the same place you are. Um, that is negotiated with the tenant in the lease itself. So. I mean, we, we can, I, I would be surprised that a tenant would agree to a lease that allowed us to terminate. On a Friday and take possession on a Monday that, in negotiating the lease, that there is some provision in a long-term lease that allows us to get the property back. But if they're operating a school there, I'm, they would not consent, I presume. To a termination in the middle of the school year, for instance. So I'm trying to figure out what that balance is between what's written in, what the mandate in the policy on behalf of the tenant is. When you have some natural forces that are going to be uh, in, in play in negotiation of the lease. So it's, it gives flexibility to the district to craft a reasonable transaction, but not. But not have, you know, decades-long restrictions on access to a piece of district property, I think was the intent. I don't know if that's helpful in thinking about it.
Okay, and um, maybe when we get to the first reading of that, we can issue a colloquy on that. Cause I think if you just. You may have to a different conclusion. You, you may have a different like take on, on it. So um. Hold a thought then.
Okay.
The, um, so thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Um. Can, can you say that again? I, I mean, are you? Are you unhappy with this language and, and want to? Uh, suggest some change? Um, if so, then I would suggest we do it here rather than at the full board meeting. Here's the place.
So what I'm saying is Liz provided a response that's an opt, an alternative approach. Or like, here's more information, like it's not in the policy, but it's in negotiated lease. And um, I, this was an issue that was raised by the community. So I'd like to have a colloquy, which is just like a discussion of like, basically me asking the question, Liz providing that same answer. In a public forum and um, you know, see whether that's, um, and obviously it's going to go out for a public comment. So. People can comment on that if they think that the, that the response that Liz just gave. Which um, is that, that's part of the lease negotiation. People can decide whether they, that, that's something that works for them or is the, yeah, that's, that's how things are done or not.
Isn't this a public forum? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm confused why it needs to happen at a board meeting because this meeting is a public forum as well.
Well, I'm just saying when we have the, the first reading, that's, if, if that's not a, if.
So you're going to just, when we have the first reading, you're going to ask a question and Liz is going to respond. Not a problem.
Thank you. Yes, that's it. That's what a colloquy is. It's like elevating uh. Information in the, in the public, in the public realm. So then another question is um, why we settled on five years? I would suggest that 10 years would be a more reasonable lease as we found before. That a five-year. Is not. That long. Um, and if we have terms that the district can get out if it needs to, obviously um, we can get out. Then the other piece, um, just to ask. Is if we have a tenant in a building. And the district makes the very rare decision that it doesn't need it. Um, giving the tenant the sort of first right of refusal to negotiate. For the property.
So I'm going to, I'm going to address the, and Dana and Kirsten and Dan jump in here at any time. I'm going to address the second question first. So a first right of refusal is generally built into the lease on the front end. And isn't, I mean, there's nothing to stop the district. I'm assuming by your question that mid-lease, the district decides is going to sell the property. Certainly, there's an opportunity to sell that property to the existing tenant. Um, and engage in those negotiations. That's a known party. I, I don't. I mean, I suppose that that could be written into the policy. I think, again, it's somewhat, it, it's likely to be somewhat in the mix already. Although I, no guarantees, right?
Is it, is it in, is it in our existing leases?
No, 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 no. I just meant, yeah, I just, go ahead, Dan. Let me just finish my thoughts so I'm clear. But, and you could, and I'm happy to be wrong, but I, but if we're looking, if we decided we wanted to sell a property. Often, I, it would be, it would be odd that we didn't ask the party who's in it if they want to buy it. If we're looking to maximize a return on that asset. Or often a tenant will come and ask, can I buy that property from you? Right? So I just, there are some market realities that aren't guaranteed, but that are, that you would expect to find much of the time, I think is what I would say. Which doesn't, that's just background for whether you want to put something like that in the policy. All right, Dana, I'm going to sit quietly now.
It, it, it could be asked by the tenant um, to have that as, as a condition. Just to be clear, it never benefits the landlord to have that right. It only benefits the tenant. So it's not something I think we would necessarily want to put in. But, but to Liz's point, if we decided to go sell a property. You know, that's the likely buyer, although, you know, depending on whether or not that was something that would work for them long-term, that they could actually purchase a building. So it would get into all that. I, so we don't have that as a standard lease provision now. It's not something I'd recommend we add, but it could be negotiated if that were appropriate.
No, I would suggest that we absolutely not add that to every lease agreement. That gives, I think, a signal that is entirely in contrast to the thrust of this policy. As to your.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, there's, there's different ways to, to look at it. You know, I think there's a lot of people say if we had a building for sale that um, could easily. Outbid, you know, maybe a current, a current tenant who actually we have a relationship with.
That's true, although in a first right refusal, that gives them the opportunity to meet the bid of somebody else. So if someone comes to us, we have a lease with party A and party B comes and says, we want to buy your building and we'll pay you $10 million. Then what the right gives the tenant to match that $10 million within a certain period of time. So um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't uh, give us, it doesn't give them the right to purchase it for less than we could sell it on the open market. We could certainly decide to do that, but, but that would be a, a different thing than a right of first refusal.
And I can't see who's talking. Is that Dana?
Oh, it's Dana. Yeah, sorry, Julia.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's okay. Sorry, I'm just on the phone. So I have just a follow-up question. Just, I want to make sure I understand what this does. This, this policy now is like, if we had a, a property that in those rare circumstances that we were going to sell. This policy would say. The primary driver is maximum market value?
I'm not sure that's what it says, Liz. Um, it seems like it takes into consideration. Uh, and I have to now look back between lease and sale.
That's a, that's a, that's a question. I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not head, I'm not heading into an argue, like some sort of.
No.
Position statement. I'm, I just want to make sure I understand.
Section C sets out the objectives for the real estate transactions.
Thank you.
Management of the district's short, intermediate, long-term educational operational needs, considering long-term population and enrollment projections. Flexibility, when you're talking about lease terms, and provide revenue and other support for the district's needs. The district must seek maximum long-term financial and other benefits. So it doesn't say um, maximize market terms per se, but I think it's very much, like it does in the lease section. When we split those two out. I think I, I find it hard to read that, particularly the maximum long-term financial and other benefits to not indicate that, that. to not indicate that that's a large driver, right? But there is, there is certainly, I mean, the board will vote on every one of these. So there's flexibility to examine what the other benefits are if you're not maximizing the long-term financial benefits.
Or cost.
As to your question about why five years is the long-term lease, I don't recall. That was, change hasn't been discussed in a while. So I honestly don't recall why it's five and not 10 or three or, I don't know if Dan or Kirsten, you have any recall of that figure?
Typically, five years is what, you know, we'd like, we don't want to tie it up longer than that. Sometimes there's options, but again, those really benefit the tenant, not the landlord. So, you know, in order to maintain flexibility, five years is typically what we've done. And in several cases, also had, you know, maybe a year's notice to vacate because it would take us time, of course, to use the building as well as taking the tenant time to move out. So I mean, it could be longer, but that's what we-
And do we do, do we do just a general structured, do we do like X plus an option? Or I know like in my professional life, that is the way to like both signal the ability to have a longer-term presence, but also providing some flexibility. Do we do that? I mean, there's benefits to both parties.
We have done that, but the option really only benefits the tenant because that's who gets to extend it. So if both of you can extend it, then it's just, it's nothing. So that it benefits the tenant for an extension option and it ties us up in our ability to do something else to the property should we desire after five years. So some tenants, if they're putting a big financial commitment to the building are going to want that. Their lender may require it. It's definitely something that would have to be discussed. But in terms of just trying to preserve our flexibility for property, I think we'd want the five-year and then we would only do extensions in some sort of extraordinary situations that the board would have to approve, of course.
And there's nothing here that sets the minimum. I mean, the terms for each lease are still negotiable for each individual property and individual tenant. There's nothing in the policy that says it has to be at least five years or at least 10 years. It's using a definition, but it isn't a mandate or a restriction.
Right.
You can have a three-year lease or a 25-year lease. There's nothing in this policy that would prevent either.
Yeah, and there are benefits to a landlord of having longer-term ones because if you have a good tenant, you know, reducing churn and being able to attract also a higher value of somebody if they know they're going to be there longer, sometimes willing to pay more if versus just a shorter term. So I do think there's advantages to the district and the landlord as well.
We're not in the real estate business. You're in the education business and-
Right, well, we just happen to have a lot of real estate. I mean-
True, but, and the buildings that we're leasing are available because at the moment, we don't need them. But a lot can change in five years if we have, as we have discovered in the last three. So I think it's to our benefit to preserve enough flexibility so that we can respond to the needs of fulfilling our educational mission, not just maintaining a good real estate relationship.
Well, not maintaining a good real estate relationship, it's to maximize value. But I think the answer that Liz, you gave is one that indicates flexibility. Again, thanks.
So are we ready to move this forward to first reading? Is that, it's going to come out of committee now? Is that the goal is?
Yes. So are there any other questions about, in particular, the, these latest revisions to the policy?
No, I feel like the revisions capture the conversation that we had, you know, the conversation we had at the last meeting, policy meeting about this policy, and then the follow-up meeting that our little subgroup had of Rita and I with Liz and Mary. So this is great.
Yeah, I would take it going because this is like taken for every committee.
Okay, so let's take a vote on whether we want to forward this to the full board with our recommendation for adoption. All in favor, say yes.
Heck, yes.
Well, the cat has views. You never know. We don't always agree. So I think that was three to zero with Scott absent for this vote. Okay, so, all right, so let's move on to the next. And this is the comprehensive sexuality education. And this is going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is going to be a kind of a conceptual discussion.
Yes.
How to move forwards and just to bring everybody, I mean, if you haven't been, if you haven't committed previous policy committee meetings to memory, the issues at hand are that we have, we have had policy and regulatory changes at both the state and the federal level, some of which are diametrically opposed or at least in some degree of opposition. And we've been trying to reconcile the two mandates. And it has, as I understand it, it has turned out to be pretty complicated. So I think this is going to be an update on how we're going to move this thing forward. Is that-
Well, this is, and this is much like the student assignment policy. It's a first look and Jenny's here, Dr. Jenny Withacome, who's going to talk us through the different ideas that her team has with regard to the policy. And so you were sent the two kind of draft ideas along with the recommendation from the, was it the Health Department? Jenny, do you want to, can I, can I transfer this over to you to discuss where we are?
Sure, and I had to park in front of a school to get a stable Wi-Fi. That's why my video's not on. I'm like trying to, you know, tap into Llewellyn here. Yeah, so basically, we have, what I have before you are two possibilities, two possible ways that we can go. So by state law, we have to have a comprehensive sexuality education policy and, which we do. And we put that in place three years ago. It was due for revision and update last year, but then COVID. So we didn't get a chance to do that. Really, what we did with the first go-around was although the Oregon Administrative Rule that is a Division 22 assurance that requires we have the policy is just one of many laws that govern comprehensive sexuality education. There are several. And so when we wrote the policy the first time, we did a ton of community engagement and we also took all of the different policies that are connected to this law and put them all into one policy for PPS because there was the Oregon Healthy Teens and there was Aaron's Law and Comprehensive Sex Ed and all these things. And so we kind of put it all into one. And that's been, that's been fine. It's been a fine policy. When we came upon the revision, there are a couple new laws that have passed at the state. And so I wanted to at least update the laws and then some of the policies that have come through in PPS that also kind of touch on some of these aspects of comprehensive sex ed. So the, one of the policies, the short one that is, it basically, it is titled comprehensive sexuality education policy is the exact same policy that we had before just with the updated OARs, ORSs and district policies bulleted out. And as you can see, there's quite a bit that is connected whether directly or peripherally to comprehensive sex ed. So that would be just a, literally just an update to the laws and mandates. It doesn't change any of the language or what we're doing in the district or anything like that. The other policy is it's essentially the same thing, but instead of being a comprehensive sex ed policy, it's a comprehensive health policy with a sex, with sex ed obviously a core part of that. The reason that I thought it might be even better to have a comprehensive health policy is that there are also a number of laws that require, like for example, we're required to do drug and alcohol prevention curriculum every year. We're required to do CPR training sometime between seventh and 12th grade. You know, we have to do training on cyberbullying and bullying. So there's actually a number of laws that also influence health education in general, not just comprehensive sex ed. And so if we change this policy from being a sex ed policy to a comprehensive health policy, but still contains the comprehensive sex ed components, then we're kind of getting, providing an overview of everything. And so the second policy that I proposed, and it's a much shorter policy, taking a cue from what Mary was saying is, you know, trying to, you know, kind of streamline policies, not go too crazy with all the language, is it outlines then all of the different laws that touch on the different health components. So Section Zero is just an outline of the laws that are kind of general health, that it's part of graduation requirements and district curriculum and things like that. And then we did Sections 1 through 4, which are some of the main health components. So mental and emotional health, nutrition, comprehensive sex ed and violence prevention and drug and alcohol. And I thought that might be a a better way to go. And then what we can do as part of the comprehensive sex ed law requires that there be an implementation plan is that we could revise our implementation plan, do the full, you know, community engagement outreach. We would have a little bit more time and we could, you know, get in deeper and create an AD, an administrative directive, sorry, that could serve as our implementation plan for comprehensive sex ed. And that would get more into the nitty-gritty of, you know, when, how often, who's responsible for it, all of those things that are required to be part of our plan and are already a part of our plan, but just we would, we would still do that, but it would be paired with this comprehensive health policy.
That was great. Thanks. What, the conversation that she alluded to is we are looking in other areas, and Liz and I have been working on this, trying to consolidate some of our policies. We have so many, I think it's not as user-friendly as it could be. And so looking to find those places where we could consolidate policies so that somebody only has to go to one place. They may have to hyperlink to others for additional information or to the administrative directive or even to the guidelines, right? But we want to make, we're trying to make the policies as a whole easier to find, easier to locate what it is you're looking for. So that was the basis for this.
And all of those laws and mandates, although I didn't hyperlink them for you all, we could, obviously, we could hyperlink them. So, you know, it could take folks to the actual laws and mandates that, you know, a good portion of them are Division 22 assurances, so that's nice, they're kind of all in one spot. But then there's others that started out as Senate bills or House bills that are now, you know, Oregon revised statutes. And so that kind of, what I found, which is tricky is like, there's Aaron's Law, which is also Senate Bill 865, which is also ORS, you know, like it's, which is also mentioned in OAR 58102225, like, it's like, oh my goodness. So this would be a really nice way. I cross-referenced all of them so that it would kind of be like, everything that we think of with Aaron's Law is this, you know, and this is what it means. So hopefully that could, that would be more transparent and helpful to folks.
So, so we have, so we have, as posted, sexuality education revised and then sexuality education revised short. Except the short, I think, is longer than the other one. So-
Let's see.
So is the one that's labeled short, is that the kind of, is that the more comprehensive one that you're talking about?
Let me open it up here.
One is comprehensive health education policy and then the other one is the comprehensive sex education policy. So you have two different titles. I don't know how they're on the board page.
On our board page, they're both sexuality education. So we've got 6.40.13-p sexuality education revised and then we've got 6.40.03-p sexuality education revised short. And then we've got the PPS comprehensive sexuality education plan of instruction process evaluation.
Oh, then, then I think that the comprehensive health one must not have made it on there. Okay.
It's not there. Okay, because I was, I was trying to figure out if it was, like, am I missing here?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I-
No, that's, no, I'm relieved. So thank you. All right, so this is, so you're talking about having, so I think the question you're asking is whether it would be better to have a sex ed policy, like a standalone sexual education policy or a health education policy that incorporates the sexual education? Right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I haven't seen that second one, the comprehensive health education. I will say, I'll make a sort of statement in principle. I personally am a big fan of comprehensive and putting everything together because I like, I like the idea of taking a holistic approach. Don't often succeed, but I like the idea. So in principle, that would be kind of where my head goes. Any other comments? Ailey, you're nodding. Would you care to elaborate on your nod?
Well, I think it, I mean, I think that, you know, really clearly catching sex education as part of health education is vital. And I think, you know, Jenny and I, we've gone around about this a little bit with health education in middle school, but I think health education is so critically important for students. It gives them just like ownership over their own lives, but also the tools they need to make decisions and learn about, you know, topics that influence a wide range of of other pieces of learning. So I think, you know, having a comprehensive health policy is really important because we have not historically as a district, done a good job of valuing health education and elevating it. And so I think it's beyond time for us to have a policy and really be clear about the importance of that. And I, you know, I'm a big supporter of sexuality education for students and think it's vitally important that we are clear on comprehensive health and sexuality education. So thank you for this work and for these thoughts, Jenny.
Sure. So can I throw something else in? I am, I'm also a big fan, a big fan of using the concept of well-being because I think health tends in general to be medicalized. And what we really want, especially around sexual education, it's not just the- It's not just the physiology, it's, it's a lot of the social emotional stuff as well. Which. The term health doesn't necessarily cap, capture. So that's my little copy editing suggestion. Cuz you know I have to.
Thank you.
So this is just the beginning. Did you, did you get what you wanted out of this?
Yes, I, I really, I really wanted to move forward with the health education, comprehensive health education and. Putting everything under one banner. And so I'm really happy that, that you all felt, felt similarly, that it's, it's nice to kind of have everything under one, one spot. And, and that I can then. I'll make sure to take, take a look and make final revisions and then I can give you the, the actual comprehensive. That one. So yeah, I'm, I'm really, I'm really grateful. Thank you for, for this feedback. I, I appreciate it.
Okay. Alright, well, that was easy. Okay, so we'll.
Awesome, awesome work, awesome work.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll look forward to you getting back to us. Just, just for the sake of thinking ahead to scheduling. Do you have, I mean, how close to being ready for prime time is this draft?
I'm ready.
Oh, oh, okay. Alright, so the next question is, when can we fit it into our busy schedule? So we will, if you think you, you're ready to go, then we'll get it back to you with a date.
Okay, sounds wonderful. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is five fifty-six. We've been going for almost two hours. I'm inclined to take a little break here. So. Shall we, it's now five fifty-seven, so shall, six oh five? Okay. We'll be back. So the next, the next policy we're going to be looking at, this is the last substantive discussion we're having today. Is on the student representative duties. And I think Nathaniel, is Nathaniel here to walk us through it?
He is here, but me and Jillian will be doing the presentation. And Roseanne, we sent you the slideshow. It was a little late today. So.
Did you want to run it yourself or did you want me to run it for you? Carol can give you permission.
Yeah, Parker is going to, but he's in the waiting room. And can Tay also be brought up just for this conversation?
Sure. Kara, do you think you can give Parker rights to run the slide presentation?
Yeah, I think he already did. I changed the setting, so. But I just made him co-host.
Thank.
Wait.
I think we still need Parker in the room.
Yeah, I clicked to move him over, but I don't see him at all.
I think he got lost along the way.
Nathaniel, do you think you could present that then?
Yeah. Ah, let's see. There we go.
Okay, well, good evening. Yes. Good evening. This is our proposed policy amendments for the policy one point two zero point zero one two, which outlines. The duties of the student rep and also the district student council. Currently, the D S C functions where the student body elects district student council representatives from their representative schools. Who in turn elect their student represent, the student representative, in this case Nathaniel Shu. Who sits on the Board of Education and advises the Board of Education. The district student council also plays a role in advising the Board of Education sometimes. So the goals and why we are proposing these changes are, there are a number of ambiguities in the policy. There are also problematic provisions that we have saw while we have functioned underneath this policy. And we believe that with these amendments, it'll be more effective, equitable and representative of the student population. And lastly, there'll be easier communication from the D S C to district staff. And the significant poly, policy improvements that we are proposing are expanding D S C membership. Via a more proportional system of representation, codifying and clarifying the role of D S C reps on committees. Establishing D S C oversight over other student committees. In addition of an avenue for the D S C to call a snap election on a representative seats in the event of egregious misconduct or negligence. Improve transparency of meeting and documents, as well as a number of other minor alter, alterations.
Alright, so we don't quite yet have our engagement plan, so this is a little bit of a rough draft. But our plan is to reach out to high schools, A S B, student government and leadership classes. And hopefully have some listening sessions and meetings, also to contact the student body more generally with a high level survey and maybe. Survey and also maybe some listening sessions. We hope to have a finalized engagement plan completed within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully this committee can continue working on tweaking our current policy. And then we can have its first reading right after we finish the engagement plan. Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's gonna need to come back to this committee for final approval before it goes to a first reading, correct, Liz? Yeah, okay, I'm seeing Nathaniel and Jackson.
Alright, yes, I stepped away to my printer for a minute. Yeah, and I, I understood that was the intent, that, that there would be, to the extent possible, parallel paths. But knowing that they all have to merge at the end before they go to a first reading is what I think, I understood Gillian to mean. Would you like them to walk through the proposed changes in the policy? You've seen a high level. Would it be helpful if they walked through this, the significant proposals? Uh, yes, I think it would. And we have a half hour, I think, or close to a half an hour, so.
I have some questions too, whenever it is, hey, whether you want to take the questions as we go.
Well, Julia, are your questions about the proposed revisions or are they? Are they not linked to specific language?
Or around specific provisions.
Okay, so why don't, why don't you guys walk us through what you're proposing? And then Julia, you can ask your questions when we get to it.
Would you like us to like show the screen of the doc and go through like line by line?
Well, it's probably not a bad idea. We may not need exactly line by line, but if you could take it sort of section by section and, and. What, what we're, what we're interested in at this point, I think, is sort of what is. What's the problem you're trying to solve? How are you trying to solve it? Why is that the solution? You know, like, what are you trying to achieve here? Okay?
Should I just share the doc?
Yes, please.
Alright. Would, would someone else like to lead this discussion? Parker, Jackson, Jillian, Tay.
Well, the first large change is like the first huge patch, which I think was proposed by Parker and Nathaniel. So if one of you wanted to go over that.
Um, yeah, I, I can take this one. This large block of text here. And basically what this does is it changes the system of representation of high schools on the D S C from just one rep per high school. To reps allocated more proportionally with school population. Now, it does allow for greater representation of smaller schools. Which is something that we all agreed was some, was worth preserving. But it does allow for larger schools to actually gain more power and voice. As, you know, they have more students there, which our corn structure does not. So what we have here is. For all schools between one and six fifty, they have one rep and then an additional rep with each bracket. Each additional six fifty, six fifty being derived from the approximately five percent of the total high school population. And. I think that's pretty much the core of that section.
I had a question about this section, cuz I was, you know, thinking from my time working in the U S Senate where. It's not a proportionate versus the House, which is, so there's, there's sort of a counter, counterbalance. But I was wondering sort of what the impact of this would be because most, and I'd be interested in looking at the data. Is that the smaller schools are probably our most diverse schools. So looking at through. A racial equity, social justice lens, whether. You, you actually have a diminished voice for those schools that. Proportionally have a larger student population of diverse students. So I'm just wondering about that because. In the Congress, you have the balance between the Senate and, but this would be moving to more of a proportion. I'm just wondering what the impact it makes, you know, the, I think the bigger schools already have a bigger, bigger voice generally in. The district's operations. And I wonder if this would make, like. Amplify that and, and accelerate it. So I'm just curious about the discussion, like if you're from a small, small school, what you thought about that?
Well, I mean, I'm from a relatively small school. Jefferson's around seven hundred. And I think it's worth emphasizing again that this does preserve outsized power for smaller schools. Jefferson, for instance, would get two reps compared to, I think Franklin's three or four. And that, that's still disproportionate representation. It's larger, but it's, it's more proportional in the corn system. And when you look at somewhere like M L C with their approximately eighty-five high school students. They'd get four times the representation on a poor student basis, if I remember correctly, as Franklin would, assuming we get four. On webs. So it, it still does preserve additional power, taking into account the fact that those are precisely the schools that tend to be underrepresented. But it, it tries to account for that in a more, more fair way. Because it, it really doesn't make sense for there to be twenty-two times as much representation or twenty-one times between M L C. On a poor student basis between M L C and Franklin, as is currently the case.
And Director Brum Edwards, that is a discussion that we had as well. Sorry, am I, am I coming through clearly?
Um, you are. You're kind of, um, could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, my.
Julia, it's, there's a lot of road noise.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's a discussion that we had as well around. It was a, it was a point brought up by Jackson around how the smaller schools typically are the ones that serve. Well, underserved communities. And we did, as Representative Shu mentioned, this, this system is still. So the, the scales are tipped in, in their favors, or in their favor, rather, just not as much. I, I, I'm not sure if it was originally intentional, but upon examining it further, that became. A benefit that, that we saw, where it did make it more, more proportional. But still in favor of the, the smaller school. So that was, that was a consideration that the, the D S C. Had before bringing it to the committee, we, when, when this was introduced.
Can I, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a little bit of legislative history here and people who are here. Present at the creation of this, or this recreation of this policy a few years ago. Correct me if I'm wrong. As I recall. In the, in the original policy, well, the pre-two thousand seventeen policy. I don't believe the smaller high schools had any representation, I think. So this is a fairly new phenomenon. And it makes sense to take a look at it and see how it's worked out in the last three years. So anyway, Julia, did you want to add something?
Well, I should say, you're, you're right. There, well, there wasn't even a district student council, per se. And it kind of depends on the, the smaller high schools. So, you know, Jefferson did have, for example, that's a, that's the definition of a smaller high school. Did have representation at the early, in the earliest versions. I think the addition of Alliance and M L C. Was not necessarily they were excluded, but they just hadn't traditionally been part of, like the voting of the student rep and things. Yeah, so it'd be interesting to see, like, based on the. Right now with the student populations where everybody, where all the high schools would land with the number of reps.
And I've actually got that break down.
Yeah, so like, you know, for example, Grant could outvote, you know, M L C and Alliance and, you know. Jefferson, I don't know, or they'd be equal. So I guess I, that's something I'll just wanna, as we go through the process. Think about it and also hear from the smaller schools, what they see the advantage or the disadvantage. Of a shift.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think taking note. You know, cuz our, and, and I, my internet decided that. You know, right, previous to this presentation to just sort of. You know, leave the building. And I'm not sure if the engagement plan was talked about, but it is still. A, a living document, if you will. And I think that that's a consideration that we can make note of, is to specifically engage. Smaller schools in, in how they feel about that specific change. And we have recently. Two, two new representatives from, from M L C. Who have done fantastic work around engaging their, their school communities in, in some other things. But we can definitely make that a point.
So can I?
Great.
Along the same lines, just like a. I guess a point of information. Nathaniel, I thought you said that Jefferson, under this scheme, would. would qualify for two representatives?
I believe unless our enrollment has gone below the threshold this year, which is not out of the question.
But, so in at an enrollment of 700, that would give two representatives?
Assuming the language says what I intended it to say, yes.
Okay. I, I'm not sure it does, so I think we may need to tinker with the language a bit. But, okay, I get the
Yeah.
Okay. I had a practical question. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but my sense over many years is that it has been difficult. It, it's been, how should I put this? Over time, it has sometimes been difficult to get even one representative of each high school. And now you're talking about having multiple. So it is, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm making an assumption here, and you tell me if this is correct. My assumption is that you're thinking is that it might actually be easier to have representation, robust representation from each high school, precisely because having multiple representatives would be easier to, to facilitate and manage. Is that what your thinking is?
Well, I think also, the problem in the past just has been visibility. I mean, DSC really hasn't been talked about to the general student body. So I don't think there's a lack of interest in being involved in the district student council. I think it's just a lack of, like, having the information that this, this is actually a position that you can hold and be a part of, which we have been trying to work on. So I do think there are people interested, it's just finding those people.
Okay. I mean, I could, I can imagine that it, it might actually be easier to be a, a part of a group representing a high school, rather than, you know, shouldering the whole burden, you're lonesome. So, okay, but I, I just wanted to, I wanted to hear what the, what your thinking was behind it. Okay.
Oh, Chair, I had a question, Chair Mark, if you don't mind me asking, around the student engagement piece. This is your host, Anne, Julia. One is, have you worked with anyone from the district, maybe someone from our equity team, to help you guys go through the racial justice, racial equity, social justice lens? Something that we would do for many other policies. So I'd like to suggest that. And my second one is, for your student engagement piece, I know that, I, I saw that you were looking at reaching out to leadership and other ASBs. But my sense is that those communities are often, we don't have many students of color who tend to join those. And so my question is, have you thought about going to affinity groups like a Metta or Black Student Union specifically, to offer opportunities as well?
Yeah, so we actually started putting together the engagement plan on Friday. It was like, we didn't know we had to put it together for this meeting. So it's like a rough, rough draft, like
It's a good start.
We had very little time to put it together. This is what we had, like
Great.
With like three days' notice. So yes, we plan on doing all that stuff and talking with district staff around how we can do better. We just, there was the weekend, so we couldn't really meet with anyone. And Shanice was out sick until Tuesday, so.
And, and Jackson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have a, have a meeting with, with Shanice. Or I, I think I got an email around setting that up or having that to, to specifically go over our, as you mentioned, pretty rough first draft, or pretty rudimentary first draft. But, you know, targeting affinity spaces was, was a, a point that was, that was brought up. And I think definitely one that, that should be pursued. Echoing what you said, Roseanne, about, you know, possible lack of, of diversity on student leadership, or in student leadership spaces.
Okay.
This piece for, just to throw out for the students' consideration is there, it could be you have some sort of threshold on, you know, there's like major issues that you would require not just a majority of the individual representatives, but also like a majority of the, the schools. So you have to sort of get a, you get a double majority on like issues of significance. So you make sure that it's not just the big school reps always something through. And that's a common, like, hard monetary or legislative practice. If you are looking at how do you sort of protect the rights of party, but also have to be representative? So just something to think about. Not every decision, but you may want to be like, hey, not only do you have to get the majority of the members of the council, but also in addition, you have to get the majority of the schools, so that it's not, again, just the big schools powering things.
Yeah. That's a good idea, and it would probably go into our bylaws, just because like decision-making is kind of subject to change, and it'd be kind of hard to put something in policy that could change from year to year, around like what, what are big decisions that year?
My next question, kind of following up on what you just said, Jackson. This policy is is pretty thin on the duties. And, and I think at the time, since this was a brand-new organizational structure for student government, you know, I, I think it was okay not to spell out duties. But you have an opportunity here to think about what you might want to have as duties. So I would encourage you to give some thought to that and and especially in consultation with staff to make, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, any idea you have is actually doable. But it might be helpful at this juncture to, to really flesh out what, what student representatives are empowered to do.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Recruitment too, you know?
Yeah, because I mean, every year we do our goals, and that takes, as the board members know, a really long time. So at least having like somewhat of an idea going into those goal sessions about what kind of things we are expected to do and kind of want to do, like forever, I guess, is a good idea.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, and I, I think that's something that we're, we're happy to, you know, this, this document in its present form, you know, the, the red line draft that we're bringing forward isn't set in stone necessarily. Obviously, the DSC has gone over this and is happy with its current contents. But I think adding, as, as you said, Director Moore, some sort of long-term, more concrete goals. I, I think that obviously Jackson, Jillian and Nathaniel, but the DSC as a whole would be, would be happy to work on that. I, I think that the reason that we didn't, or that there aren't necessarily, was coming from a point of uncertainty, not, not necessarily knowing or, or having that direction. But I, I think, you know, getting that from the board isn't, or could, you know, is a, is a benefit, is a positive in this, you know, the, the, the process generally. But yeah, I, I also like that idea.
Okay, so so I'm thinking that we'll put this on the committee's agenda with, but we'll leave a date open so that you guys can give some thought to what you might want to, what you might want to do in terms of kind of envisioning what the duties, responsibilities of DSC and the student rep would be. And that might take a little, a little time, I'm thinking, if you haven't had conversations about that yet. So we can, you know, you can get back to us when, when you feel like you're, you've got something that you want us to consider as policy revisions. So we'll just kind of leave it open and, and you get back to us about when you want us to take it up, you know, in, in earnest. Did you get, did you get from this session?
Hey Rita. I have two more, just, I have two more things before we close it out that I wanted to flag.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, one is, one is who has the authority call a snap election? And I'm not sure that I, I'd like to know more about why the DSC would be able to, you know, call that. Because it seems like the person, the representatives are elected by, selected by their school community. So having the DSC, like being able to call a new election, I'm I'm not sure I think that's the right process. If somebody, if there's some sort of action that, you know, I always think it's the, the voting electorate who should decide who represents them. So I just want to flag for you that I'd have a bunch of more questions about that. And then, and I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the policy in front of me, so I can't cite this specific language. But I remember when I read the portion about the staff liaison, that it was a shift from
I, I think you
Fighting and I was just saying there's a section, can you guys hear me?
We can now, but you cut out for a while.
Okay, I was just, I was saying on the DSC. I'm not sure it's the DSC that should be calling it. I think it's more the school community should be making a decision.
That part we got.
Okay.
That you cut out.
Okay, there, there's a change in who decides what the staff liaison roles and responsibilities are. And again, I don't have it right in front of me, but it seemed like it shifted from the superintendent and district staff to the DSC. And I'd want to know what the student engagement thinks about that and the superintendent that would be bookmarking those two issues as ones that I'd want to have for good discussion about. And happy to talk to any of the students here today, because I think you guys did a great job of fleshing out really important issues for how you're governed and how you work.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you, Director Brim Edwards. And, and both of those issues, or both of those revisions are, are concerns that were brought, you know, it's, it's not only you that has these, these similar questions. And I think the, you know, the fact that they're repeated is your reason, reason enough to have, to have a further discussion. Make, make sure that all, all parties that are involved are, you know, equitably treated by this policy. I, I think if you wanted to, to come to one of our sort of policy workshop meetings, we, we had a few. I think the feedback that we've gotten might, might prompt us to have a, a few more before coming back. But if you, if you wanted to come to one of those meetings or, you know, otherwise have a discussion. I know I personally am, am totally open to that. And I think the other students here and the other students on the DSC are more than happy to, to, to really dig into some of the, the, in the weeds things. So I, I, I think your schedule was probably more constrained than, than ours. So we can, we, we can
I'd welcome that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And one last thing for the snap election, and Nathaniel, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm pretty sure you proposed this. It's not that we would decide whether the DSC rep could continue on the DSC. It's saying we're referring it back to the district, or back to the school, saying, or is this someone you still want to be representing you?
Right, and the language was intentionally there as an alternative to say, like expulsion in order to allow the students to determine who is representing them and if they're actually representing the views that they hold. And as a mechanism to make sure the DSC doesn't just throw out people they disagree with, that it, all schools can make, all schools have someone who they think represents their views and interests.
Well, maybe instead of the DSC making the decision about whether the school should ask that question again, maybe you should build some mechanism within the high, within the high school. But if there's a concern that somebody's not representing a school community, that the schools have a mechanism to have an election. But I guess, you know, like, what special knowledge does the DSC have on whether somebody's representing a school community?
The, the language isn't about whether or not they're representing the community. The language is about whether or not they're acting in consistent and egregious consistently and egregiously acting against the interests of the policy or the bylaws. It's basically a misconduct or negligence clause. And just the snap elections there to make sure that they're not thrown out if they just, if for, for cases that aren't that.
Nathaniel, I thought the language was, was specified around either a, a direct violation of, of policy or bylaws.
Right.
A general acting against their constituency, because that was part of the original language. We decided that that was, that was too loose, and there weren't really strict definitions of what that might be. And that, that would ultimately be up to their constituency, you know, their, you know, the high school, as opposed to the DSC directly. So that, I think that language was, was changed. It was more, more open, more to that theme, Director Brim Edwards. But I think that that got changed around a little bit pretty recently, second half of last week-ish.
And it was modified a bit before then, but yeah.
So some, somewhere you'd have to have definitions about what, you know, what would constitute fitness or, or lack thereof. So they could be policy or the bylaws or both, or anyway.
One challenge we kind of encountered, sorry, last thing, was that to stay at like the district level, we couldn't say certain high schools had to do certain things, because each high school has a different form of student government. Some have ASBs, some only have leadership classes, some have both. So that was like a huge challenge of ours, saying like, it has to come from ASB or school-wide elections, when schools don't necessarily have those to begin with.
So I'll bring up something that I brought up, what, three years ago, three and a half years ago, when we first looked at this. I, personally, I think it's problematic that you can't predict what, what's going to constitute student governance in, in any particular school. And I think it has, as I understand it at least, I think it has periodically caused some significant inconsistencies in practices across schools.
Oh, yeah.
So there might be some value in using this revision of policy to push the envelope a little bit on what you can, on what student government ought to look like across the district. student government ought to look like across the district. So in case, this is me encouraging you to, to, you know, have that.
Yeah, and, and that's, I, I think we felt that it necess, it wasn't necessarily our, our place to say this is how your, your student body government should look. But we did put a, a strong emphasis on the DSC being an elected position, regardless of the individual student body government, that's another issue that I also am passionate about, student, student leadership generally and, and specifically student body governments. But as Jackson said, keeping it at a, at a district level, you're really only mandating what is in our sphere, if you will. You're having the DSC position be elected at every school, regardless of their pre-existing or lack thereof, of student body government. But I, I, I hear what you're saying, Director Moore, and I, I think that's a, another really valuable conversation that I'm certainly enthusiastic about.
Okay.
And if I recall correctly, there is a separate student government policy, is that correct? I, I'd be interested in perhaps revisiting that at some point.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we stop it here? And then, you know, you guys do what you, do what you're gonna do and, and then you keep in touch and let us know when you are kind of approaching the point where it would be helpful to schedule another committee meeting, and then we'll get it on the, on the calendar, okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, next up, I think do we have any, we have two policies that are out for public comment. Anti-racism, anti-oppression learning communities policy, do you know if there have been any? If there's been any feedback on that?
We have not received any feedback.
Okay.
Can I just ask, who is our policy sent out to besides the labor representative? After we have our first reading?
It's not sent out beyond that. There is a, it is posted on the policies under revisions page, which invites public comment and tells people how to give feedback on it. But we don't send it out anywhere else.
So we don't close the loop?
First readings of public comments are also included in the public meeting notices that go out about board meetings, so there is a a general distribution list for those. Sorry.
Okay. Have we given any thought to kind of closing the loop? If, if during the engagement period, we've had contact with, you know, specific, you know, beyond a, a kind of general survey or something? If we've had contact with kind of representative groups or, or organizations? Do we close the loop and send them the draft that we've come up with?
I know that, and Dani LaDesma is not here to speak to this, but I, when I spoke to her on Friday about this policy and the, the accompanying administrative directive, she was putting together a timeline for engagement. I, I don't have it, but I know that's what she was putting together over the weekend. Go ahead, Liz.
No, no, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary, I was gonna shift a little bit, so please finish if you have more.
That's it.
Okay, I think as a general matter of process, there is not a formal recirculation after engagement. To answer your question more broadly, I think Mary can address these policies in particular, but that is not part of the current repeatable consistent process.
Okay.
Yeah, just one thing that I've guessed or encode, and we're, you know, we've got policies, having some mechanism besides like you have to go to the district webpage, it seems like, because people aren't in schools, it's just, I think it's even harder to engage people in the, in the conversation, because we have so little points of actual, actual meetings, just in general. It just seems like we, it would be good to, for our policies, to get them out a little bit broader during the public comment period, because the number of people that are gonna watch the board meeting and then, or go online and go to that specific page, it just seems small.
What do you have in mind, Julia? I'm guessing that you have some mechanisms and channels in mind, I'd love for you to share them to help us get.
Well, for, for example, this particular policy, you know, we had a whole bunch of incidents at high school last year, so circulating it to the high school principals or to the site council. With a, you know, this is part of, that, it's much of state, I think also something that we as a community feel is, is a value, and we've actually had a lot of incidents related to it, so, you know, have, have we hit the mark? Or is there other, you know, things to do? So I, I mean, in this, that particular, this particular policy, it was, we're sending it to the, you know, it says we have these parent advisory groups also, like, just a routine matter we have. This is what I did with like the professional conduct, I mean, I just posted it on my Facebook page and a number of other places, but I got some great feedback. And then so it seems like, you know, we have a 21-day period to try and get it out. Or it could be this point of just people who commented, you know, who were part of the earlier engagement process. Because a lot of times, when people look at the very beginning, it looks considerably different at the end.
So I think, I mean, throw out a proposal that we add something like this in the engagement plan. So the subject matter expert or the staffer who is shepherding this work through and supporting the work of the committee will be responsible for that loop back. I don't think that falls on Roseanne, I think it needs to be with the staff member who is the, the subject matter expert on that and has had the lead role, the lead staff substantive role, does that make sense? Yep, yep, totally, yep. Okay, and the other policy is professional conduct policy. Have we had any commentary on that? Okay.
We have not.
Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm paying attention to the time, and we have a number of people signed up for public comment. So why don't we move right into that? So do we have the first person giving testimony?
Yes, David, sorry, my screen's too far, I can't see it, Scolton. David, you should be.
Hi, I just was bumped off and had to rejoin, I guess, as a commenter now, so thanks, thanks for, I'm, I wanted to comment on the PPS policy on the foundation fundraising, if I could, thanks for having me. May I just start, or is there a procedure where I state my name first, or?
Yeah, state your name, spell your last name for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you, my name is David Scolton, my last name is spelled S-C-H-O-L-T-E-N. And I'm a fifth grade teacher at Abernathy Elementary School. Abernathy's student body is 82% white and 18, and 8.9% receive free and reduced lunch in a district where 56% of students are white and 22.5% receive free and reduced lunch. Abernathy holds several fundraisers for, among other things, the purchase of 2.5 FTE over the PPS allocation. In 2018-19, Abernathy raised over $230,000 and kept for its own use about $157,000. The average grant awarded to schools applying from the general fund was about $30,000. There's a commonly held belief in our community that these efforts are needed because we can't compete with Title I schools who get so much aid. But raising this money, but raising this much money year after year comes at a cost felt both within our community and without. At our school, there is very rarely a time when a fundraiser is not happening. This has a significant impact on our school culture. Most PTA communications begin with a call to donate and parents are bombarded with countless emails asking them to contribute or participate in events. In order to raise as much money as possible, all events use competition to drive up the amount we receive. Our classrooms are places where we stress collaboration over competition. But this incessant fundraising runs counter to the culture we as teachers try to build. But perhaps the greatest harm done to our community is that raising this much money robs us of the opportunity to build a community by working for a greater we, a we that encompasses more than just our school. Because so much parent energy is spent solving the perceived shortfalls at Abernathy, little energy is spent advocating for structural change that might lead to a more robust revenue source that would benefit all schools in PPS. Abernathy's significant social capital remains untapped because we are permitted to work for our school alone. In conclusion, the current model is divisive and acts as an obstacle to the deeper changes we all wish to realizing. Reforming the foundation fundraising model will free communities with significant time and resources to work as one district to make sure we have adequate funding at the state level. Reforming foundations that are divisive within and harmful without will strengthen our whole community as we refocus our energy to efforts that benefit all. I'll end by asking, what kind of community are we trying to build here at PPS? I know I want one that is loving, one where we are encouraged to care for one another. I think reforming foundation fundraising is a good step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carson.
Hi, and I'm going to be speaking on the same topic as David just did. So my name is Susan Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N. I'm the parent of a sixth grader at Roseway Heights Middle School, and I'm working with a group of advocates on reforming the PPS foundation funding system that allows parents to raise money to pay for teachers at their individual schools. This system hasn't been reviewed in over 15 years, and it's well past time to reexamine it. Many of us promoted our schools' foundations in the past. We were those nice white parents who thought we were doing the right thing by our own schools, while adding to a fund that benefited schools in underserved communities. Everybody wins, right? But when we take a closer look, the reality is very different. These good intentions have resulted in a system that benefits mainly white wealthy families while doing little for those most in need. Of the roughly $4 million raised annually through local school foundations, $3 million stays at the whitest wealthiest schools in the district, and everyone else splits up the rest. Parent fund grants, typically $20,000 to $50,000, are never enough to pay for even one full-time staff member. Whereas top fundraising schools use foundation funds to pay for multiple teachers at their own schools. Imagine if an outside foundation said, we're going to give $4 million to PPS. The catch is, $3 million of that has to go to the whitest wealthiest schools in the district. It sounds appalling, right? But that is our current system, it's just that the foundation happens to be funded by PPS parents. We're not advocating to end parent fundraising altogether. Fundraising can be a great way to build community. But in the past 15 years, so much has changed in our understanding of equity and systemic racism. In 2021, the board should encourage parents across the district to refocus their energy, time, and creative spirit to work together on long-term, stable funding at all schools. Local school foundations are unstable, divisive, and they're not equitable. How can we justify keeping this broken system? Every parent wants to improve our schools, but it's up to the board to remove the option for parents to fund staffing on a microscopic level. PPS is an ecosystem of student potential that will define our community's future health, economy, and overall success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Douglas Wise signed up, but it looks like we have Kendra Wise.
Yeah, so it's, my name is Kendra Wise, W-I-S-E. And I am a parent, and my pronouns are she/her, I'm a parent of a student at Robert Gray Middle School and a former fundraiser at Bridle Mile Elementary. We moved from a Title I school to Bridle Mile, and upon our arrival, we kept hearing that PPS funds some schools less, expecting parents will make up the difference through fundraising. So we were eager to get involved, giving our time and money to help raise funds to buy staff. In the course of my fundraising, I received an email from a parent objecting to our fundraiser that was selling seats at their child's music performance. The only way he could get a seat in the first few rows of the concert was to buy one. So I began questioning my own participation in the foundation. I've spoken with many parents who feel excluded from the school community because they can't afford to attend the auction and its affiliated events. I realized that in addition to exacerbating racial inequity at the district level, local school foundations are divisive. Within school communities, foundation fundraisers are a means for families to buy access to the social community. One of the easiest ways for foundations to raise money is by charging admission to private parties. So you first have to be able to afford to attend the auction, at which you can purchase admission for both you and your kids to attend these parties. For parents, it's mostly house parties held throughout the year, but our students are impacted by this behavior too. Some examples of parties for kids have been after-school outings with their teacher for only five kids and back-to-school barbecues for each grade. By allowing foundations to raise funds in these ways, you're condoning school communities being divided by socioeconomic status, then ingraining this broken racist system into the minds of students. And all of this, the many volunteer hours, having a divided school community, exacerbating systemic racism for one FTE. These events turn school communities inward rather than building bridges to connect our district as a whole. We are one district and our systems need to reflect and support the desire many parents in our community have to adequately fund all schools. Local school foundations have been an obstacle to that unity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Higgs.
Go ahead.
Oh, is it me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about, hi again, I'm Amy Higgs, she/her pronouns, Higgs is H-I-G-G-S. I'm Executive Director of the Eco School Network, and I am thankful and excited that you all are diving into the climate crisis response policy. And the discussion has been really productive so far. I'm a big fan of the DOE's Green Ribbon Framework and the Whole School Sustainability approach, and I'm glad that last week's discussion and presentation was inspiring. And also, given the urgency and public interest in passing a policy focused on climate crisis response, I hope that the climate will remain the organizing framework rather than switching to a broader focus on green, healthy schools, which is the ODOE framework. I just did a quick reorganization of all the targets from the policy draft version 19 and put them into the three pillars of the ODOE. And I have that document ready to share with you, so I can email that right after the meeting. But there is actually a lot of content under each one of those pillars. Pillar one is all about reducing environmental impact and, and reducing emissions. Pillar two, which is health and wellness, from a climate change perspective, is really about survival and preparedness and resilience from the, the personal impacts of climate change, which fit directly under that pillar. And pillar three is about environmental and sustainability education, so I'll email this to the committee right after this meeting. And many of the targets fit into all three pillars, and so that's why we reorganized it to be aligned with the way that PPS does business and hopefully easier for the public to wrap their heads around. Also, the Green Ribbon Schools program focuses on the school level, not on the district level, and that's because reorienting a single school toward this three-pillar framework is a huge feat, and reorienting a large urban school district for those goals is an even bigger feat that would be amazing for PPS to pursue, but I believe is well beyond the scope of a single policy like that. So that's all, and Mike and Jane and I are, are at your service, and if there's any way we can lighten your load moving forward with this policy, we would love to help get it ready to share with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that's it, we have another person signed up, but I don't see them.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you for everybody's comments, they're, they're useful as we work through these policies. And it is now 7:03, and I'm late. And it is now 7:03, and I'm late for another meeting. So if there's no objection, I think we'll adjourn for today and reconvene in three weeks. Okay, thanks, everybody. Bye.